Good evening, everyone. We are about to start our 6:00 PM Subcommittee Conference on the Discuss the Capital Improvement Plan FY22, FY26. Officials invited to attend the Subcommittee Meeting are City Manager Tom Amberzino, Honorable Members of the City Council, Deputy City Manager Ned Keef, DBW Commissioner Fidel Maltese, all members of the public, and I want to recognize that we also have from Community Development and Housing Alex Train. The Clerk will now call the role of the City Councilors.
Counselor Vito. Counselor Abc. Nada.
Present.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Garcia.
She's here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Brown. And Counselor Abbott.
Here.
Here.
Yep.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven members present. You have a call.
Good evening, Counselor Brown. We have you recognized. I also am aware that I received a communication from Counsel Antonio Lopez that he will be coming and is arriving late. So, we will start while we await his arrival. At this moment, I'll ask the City Manager to begin by making his opening statement and go through the presentation. Afterwards, we will have questions from our colleagues, councilors pertaining to the capital improvement project.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you have before you the city's FY22 CIP request. It totals over $16 million, and there's 40 specific projects that we are proposing to do. We have the funding for all of this spending. I can, my recommendation is let me quickly go through the 40 items. I have Alex Train and Fidel Maltese here because they, in some of these bigger projects, they know the details far better than I. They've been involved in the design work, and so to the extent that there are questions on the details, they're probably better able to answer than I am. But let me quickly go through each of these items. A lot of these items you have seen before in past CIPs, and we're kind of proposing to do the same work, and that's true for the first two, which is architectural services and public building renovation work. So, the architectural services are those services that we need to help us design some improvements to our public buildings. The request is for $50,000 for that work. And then, the renovation work is half a million dollars. This would help us to continue to upgrade our public buildings. There's projects that we have in mind. The one in this, the next area for this building is likely to be a renovation of the assessor's office. We've completed auditing, we have completed treasury, we've completed clerk, and the next office we're looking to do is the assessor's office. The next item, number three, is renovations to the DPW city yard. That city yard really needs some work. The city in the past has thought about trying to relocate that city yard, build a new city yard somewhere. Trying to do that is very expensive. It's difficult to find land in this city. We've made the decision now that, you know, with an expenditure perhaps of a million or $2 million over the course of the next couple of years, we can probably do the necessary renovations to keep that city yard active and operating efficiently in the existing location for perhaps as long as another decade, at which point, a decade from now, the city could consider some longer-term solution. But we think that we have a solution for the next decade or so. But step one is to replace the roof, and that's what this item is for. This is a roof replacement of the existing DPW city yard. The next three items are all school department capital projects. The money will come from the school stabilization fund. There's adequate funding in there for these three projects. It's the repair of the roof and exterior envelope of the high school, roof and exterior envelope for the Mary C Burke complex, and replacement of HVAC units at the early learning center. So, these are three school projects that will be, we're proposing to fund from existing money that is in the school stabilization fund. The next item is a dump truck with a plow. This is to, we're always trying to upgrade our snow fighting equipment. This is, it's good to have some of these upgraded vehicles. We're proposing to use it out of retained earnings because when it's not being used for snow fighting, it will be used in the water sewer and drainage department, which is typically where most of our heavy snow fighting equipment is used in when it's not being used during the winter season. The next item is a utility truck for the DPW. This is the truck that's currently used for sign work, to fix signs in the city. The existing vehicle is from the year 2000 and is just at the end of its useful life. So, the proposal is to replace this signed vehicle with a new vehicle. The next item is another vehicle for water sewer and drainage. It's a small truck that'll be helpful to move around some equipment there. Again, this is a $28,000 expenditure that would come out of retained earnings. The meter replacement, this is an ongoing five-year project to ultimately replace all the water meters in our city. This is the third year of a five-year program to replace meters. We have allocated $300,000 for this purpose each of the last two years, and we're proposing the same thing again. The next item is one of the two changes that I sent you under cover letter last week for your consideration for tonight. This is the firewall replacement. In the original letter to you on February 1, this was identified as a $50,000 free cash item, but in the interim, we received a $90,000 U.S.C. grant, and so, we will use the $90,000 U.S.C. grant to do a full firewall replacement. It was intended to be a two-year project previously, but now we'll do it all, we'll do it all this year with this grant, and we will not need any appropriation from free cash for this purpose. Item number 12 is an upgrade to our website. Our website is a little dated at this point, and it needs an upgrade, and we would like to do that. The next four items are things that are in our CIP basically every single year. They're sort of IT replacements of existing items that just have a life cycle that needs replacement every year, and so, it's replacing the desktops, replacing the public safety TOF books, replacing some of our storage, and replacing some of our servers. And you'll see these items just about every year in our CIP because each year, some of them need to be replaced just to keep them all updated, and that's those four items. The next item, number 17, we're looking for a new vehicle for the parking department. The current vehicle we want to replace is 15 years old and at the end of its useful life. Item number 18, again, one of these recurring expenses just to upgrade library computers and furniture. It's a $10,000 item that will be in the operating budget. All these items that I just mentioned, the last six, will be reflected in the operating budget of the FY22 budget proposal. The next project, this is our annual park project. We get a $400,000 park grant. We put $350,000. We try to spend around $750,000 in each park. I believe the park we're looking at this year, at the specific request of the council, is Quigley Park. The next item is the Garden Cemetery. This is a seven-phased project, and we are in the sort of second phase of Phase Two right now, doing the exterior wall and the fence work. This is to do Phase Three, which I believe is work on the monuments and the crypt. We have, you have seen, it's online, the multi-year Garden Cemetery Restoration Plan. We probably have to update the pricing on that plan because it's been now about four years since we got that pricing, but the plan itself is the plan we are following. The prices in the plan are probably a little bit dated. We think this next Phase Three now is about a half a million dollar item. The next item is to look at and design some improvements to some of our staircases in the city. This came to us from council. This is, some of our staircases are in very poor condition. This is simply money to do some design work, to repair them. There is repair money, actual construction money, in the proposed FY23 CIP. It's about half a million dollars. So, this year, we want to just get structural engineers and architects out there to take a look at the stairs, design improvements with the expectation that next year, once we have some plan of action, we will actually do some construction to improve some of these staircases. The next item is Mill Creek Resilience Planning. That's a plan to improve the Mill Creek. We're getting a $240,000 grant, I assume from CZM for that purpose, and this is our share that would come from free cash of $60,000. The next item, 23, is just, we typically try to replace some of our cameras around the city every year. Some of them reach the end of their useful life, and this is a free cash request to replace some of our many cameras that exist around the city. Similarly, the next item, same thing. Every year, we replace some of our cruisers. The cruisers are $62,000 apiece, and this would replace four of them. That's a recurring expense. Same with the next one. We're always trying to upgrade the radios themselves that the police utilize, and so, this is to upgrade the portable radios, another free cash request. I'm now on item number 26. This is replace an unmarked cruiser. This will not be, this will come out of forfeiture funds. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is something the state requires you to update every five years, and it just, you hire a consultant. It has a cost. Our new plan is due, I believe, in March of 2022, and so, we have to upgrade that plan, and this would be the cost for doing that. The Island End River Barrier Permitting. So, the Island End River Salt Mass Restoration Resilience Project is a massive project, a very expensive project, but one essential for the future to protect that area, particularly the critical infrastructure around it, including the produce center. When you think about all the work that needs to be done in this area, the barrier, the flood protection, the salt mass restoration, the tide gate changes, the tide gate restoration, the culvert improvements, all the work that has to be done in Everett that goes along with this to ensure that the water just doesn't curve around the Everett side, this is probably a $50 million project. Now, there is money for these huge infrastructure projects through FEMA, and the expectation is we are going to go after some of this money, and given this is a critical infrastructure, not just for Chelsea, for the United States of America, this produce center serves all of the northeastern United States and cannot be underwater, we expect that we're going to have a very competitive proposal for FEMA once we have all of our permitting in place. This is an effort to just advance the permitting part of this massive project, and it's a request for $120,000 from free cash. The Signalization Upgrades at Select Locations. This is just to continue our efforts to upgrade our smart traffic lights. We've done these smart traffic lights at Broadway Eastern. We've done them on Broadway and Williams. They're very effective. They make a big difference, but they're expensive, but we want to continue the process, and so, this is a request for funding to continue that effort. Item 30 is a new fire vehicle for the deputy. That vehicle is old. This was intended to be in last year's CIP, and I think we pulled it to save some money, but this vehicle does need replacement. This is a fire deputy's vehicle. The Police Radio System Upgrade. So, this isn't the radio themselves. This is the back end, the antennas, and all of the infrastructure to upgrade this system. This is a request from the E-91 Director. This system really needs an upgrade, and this item of $300,000 would pay to do that. The Chapter 90 Request. So, every year, we get roughly $596,000 from the state for roadway work. We always try to add more money so we can do more roads. We're proposing this year to add half a million dollars from our own free cash so we can do roughly a million, one worth of work over the course of this construction season in doing new roads and sidewalk work. We've specifically pulled out item 33, which is Marlboro Street Sidewalks, because that's a specific expensive item. The sidewalks on Marlboro Street, they will cost $400,000 just for that alone, so that would eat up a lot of our Chapter 90 money if we didn't pull this out. We did the roadway work in Marlboro Street last year, but the sidewalks are in really poor condition, so we'd like to do the sidewalks there. The CDBG Surface Enhancements. This is, so, most of this will come from CDBG money, but we will need a share to do it. This is for improvements that are outlined in the book for Chester Ave and Charmett. The only thing I want to say about CDBG is there is, there has been a delay in the CDBG process because of COVID. Typically, we would have submitted our CDBG request for this year already. However, and Alex could talk a little more about this, we got word from the federal government that they are now delaying the CDBG submission until December, and it's going to be a combined two-year CDBG for '21 and '22, and so, we'll be submitting in December. This will be an infrastructure project for that submission, but it's delayed at least six months. But this is the submission. It's for Chester and Charmett. Complete Streets, that sidewalk, bike path, pedestrian improvements. We get allocated, because we're a complete streets community, we get allocated $400,000 every year from Mass DOT, and we get that money, but you have to come up with a contribution, and so, the $75,000 is our required contribution for that. Everett and Chestnut Redesign, that's the intersection of Everett-Chestnut that has been a pedestrian and vehicular problematic intersection. We just, we had the Metropolitan Planning Organization look at that intersection and give us some recommended improvements. In fact, I just got that from Alex today. They have a recommendation, a list of recommendations to improve this intersection, and this is an effort to fund those improvements. They just ironically happened, their analysis that they did at our request for no cost of the city just came in today. The Upper Broadway Easement Acquisition. So, Upper Broadway, as you know, is that multi-10-plus-million-dollar project that's underway right now with the drainage and utility work, the water and sewer work, to be followed by drainage, roadway, and sidewalk work. Most of the money for that project is coming from the federal government. It's a federal highway project. We've got a $10 million grant from the federal, from the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, from the federal government. But the one thing they do not pay for is the legal work and the easement acquisitions that you need for the project to go forward. So, there are isolated areas where our sidewalk actually extends onto private property, and so, we have to take formal easements from people in order to keep the sidewalk in the same location where it is in, and so, this is the cost of doing the necessary acquisition and the legal filings that we'll need. The federal government won't provide us with this final sign-off for the work and allow us to proceed until all this easement work is completed. So, before we start spending any of that federal money, which is on the sidewalk, drainage, and roadway piece of it, we need to have this done. The Cotter and Willow Water Sewer Roadway Work, this is all the work that's going to be done in and around the Innis redevelopment. This is the second one that I updated for you in my letter. It's because the work came, we just, in the interim period since I sent that letter, got an updated price from our designers, and the cost is more than we anticipated when I submitted the letter back in February. We think we need another $750,000, in part because we upgraded the drainage system in the hopes that we could alleviate some of the flooding that we all know exists on Willow Street after every storm, and so, the hope is that with upgraded drainage, we could alleviate that, but we think we need another $750,000, and so, that's the change that's in here from the original proposal, is that additional $750,000 borrowing under sewer bonds. The Last Two, Lead Service Replacement. We are doing this every year. We're borrowing $300,000 from the MWRA to replace lead service lines in the city. So, every time we find one of these, we replace it at no cost to the resident, and we're borrowing $300,000 a year to continue that work everywhere we uncover. Sometimes, we do isolated ones. Most of the time, we do them in conjunction with a project when we're digging up a street. And the final one is the Stormwater Management Plan. This typically is in every one of our CIPs. This is the testing and training and all of the stuff necessary for us to maintain our existing stormwater permit from the EPA and the DEP so we can discharge stormwater into the Chelsea Creek. And that's, in a nutshell, the proposed CIP. I can answer questions, and when I can't, I'll turn it over to Alex and Fidel.
Okay. I know that Counselor Brown has to leave, so I'll recognize him first so that he may ask any questions that he may have. So, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Ms. Manager, I just have one question regarding the vehicles. I know you said you had four vehicles in this request, but you also spoke of a unmarked vehicle. Is that one of four, or will it be a total of five?
So, there's actually, let's see, one, two, three, four, seven, eight. Looks like there's nine vehicles in here. There's two vehicles, there's three vehicles for the DPW. There are four new cruisers. There's the vehicle for the parking clerk, and there's the vehicle for the fire deputy. Actually, there's 10, and there's the unmarked cruiser.
Now, so, how much is the unmarked cruiser? Because I know you said it was 62 for the four, correct?
Yes. Each of the marked cruisers is 62,000. The unmarked cruiser is 50,000, but that's coming out of forfeiture funds.
Okay. Thank you. And I apologize again. I made another commitment.
Counselor Robinson, you have any questions?
Back to what you and I talked a little bit earlier about, was the, about doing the stairs?
Yes.
And that money is mainly for somebody to come in and do design?
Yeah, we're going to have to do a structural analysis of the stairs. I mean, how, I don't know if we have to do a massive reconstruction of these stairs or it's just going to be smaller, you know, repair work, but we're going to need to get a structural engineer out there, we're going to need to get an architect. So, this is just an amount of money to help us assess the problem over the course of this fiscal year, fiscal year '22, with the hope that we could start designing something for the spring and be ready to spend money next summer, summer of FY22, with a FY23 CIP appropriation.
Yeah, because I was just going to say, to me, that number looked kind of low.
Yeah, that's.
But that's only to.
Yeah, that's not construction. I don't know what the cost of construction will be. I expect it's not going to be small, and I believe we, just as a placeholder in FY23, I believe we put in $500,000, but let me take a quick look. $550 is sort of the placeholder we have for next year for doing this work, but I, you know, that's really a guesstimate. Hopefully, by the spring of, if this money is approved, by the spring of '22, I hope to have some sense as to what it will cost. We're looking at just three staircases at the moment, two up on, heading up to the Soldier's Home, and the one that goes from Broadway to Clark on Broadway.
My, one of my other questions is in regard to the sidewalk repair, is that somehow we can get on our radar Cotter Street. As the kids who walk to school going down on the right-hand side, there's a bunch of sidewalks that are pretty beat up with cracks, and it's not suitable for elderly or anyone that's pushing it in a wheelchair or a walker.
Yeah, we can certainly, I don't specifically have it in this year's plan, but it's certainly something we could program for the next, if we can't get to it this year for construction season '22. Yes, I'm not disagreeing that those, there's work to be done.
Yeah. All right, I'm good, Mr. President.
Counselor Lopez?
Sorry, I came a little late, but I don't know if you guys talk about Marlboro Street sidewalks. Are they going to be done this year?
Yes, there's a specific appropriation in here for Marlboro Street sidewalks.
Any of my colleagues? Counselor Judith Garcia, Rodriguez, any questions? Naomi Zabbitt, no?
My colleague had already asked a question about the stairs, which I appreciate is one of the things that myself and the previous council from the district, Louis Tahada, had pushed for, trying to rehab what we consider historic stairs. So, I'll be interested in learning a little bit more about that. The, is there, besides the, what is planned for Broadway in the next upcoming year? I didn't, I'm trying to see what we had here regarding beyond the work in Upper Broadway. Is there any work being planned for the downtown area as part of this?
Design, ongoing design work, but you've already funded, we have the money for that design.
Okay.
Already. You funded, you gave us a $5 million appropriation about two years ago. We have not spent all that money. That's what we're using for our design work, so Alex and Fidel probably have a better sense of where we exactly stand on that project in terms of design, but we have secured already about $6.5 million from Mass DOT for that project with the expectation we'll get more, but Alex may, has much more.
Great, thank you. So, we're right now in the process of designing the streetscape and utility improvements for Broadway from the City Hall area down to Williams Street. That's been fully funded. Additionally, we are beginning the design of Bellingham Square as well as the area outside of City Hall with the same funding, and we'll be initiating that design process this spring. And then, lastly, the city manager alluded to additional funding. We are right now preparing a grant to the U.S. Department of Transportation. You may be familiar with the Tiger Grant Program, so we'll be targeting that program for construction financing for utility reconstruction as well as any surface reconstruction. for construction financing for utility reconstruction, as well as any surface reconstruction that Mass DOT won't pick up. So we should hopefully have that application in by July and notice from the feds by the fall.
Tom, with this re, with this work, the redesign of Bellingham Square and the work on Broadway, what I don't see, and I spoke to you briefly about this, is actual work redesign of, say for example, Chelsea Square itself inside the sidewalks. Like, I see the work on the, on the street, it may be some sidewalk, but I participated in a planning session years ago about reimagining what Chelsea Square would look like. So I would love to see at some point us come back, that as we were redesigning the streets on this and the sidewalks, that we look back and say, look, we already went through a programming so that when we re-envision the square itself and we're planning whether there be city events and gatherings, that the current configuration doesn't make sense for what this community is looking for. And we've, we've tried to bring people downtown, but that's not a very welcoming, in my opinion, not a very welcoming sort of layout, and I'm wondering, at what point can we look at spending some money for design work for the inside the box, not the outside streets?
So you did raise this with me, unfortunately, it was after I had submitted the CIP. I did commit to you that if we weren't able to make any progress on that with existing funds this year, I would indeed have a specific line item in the FY '23 CIP for that purpose, spending some money to look at the parkland piece of Chelsea Square. As you know, we are redesigning the streets around it, including raising the level of Second Street between the two. I did mention this to Alex about looking at that. I don't know that we're going to be able to do any of that in the next calendar year, but I have committed to you, and I have a note on my desk, that this will be a piece of our FY '23 CIP to look at that parkland piece of it. Again, this is a sort of a long-term, you know, the Lower Broadway piece is still a few years away, so we're not in a timing crunch yet, but I heard you out and clear, you will see something in next year's CIP, unless for some reason we are able to squeeze that redesign in, but I don't know that we can at this point.
Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I guess the only, the only item I would add would be, you know, we likely do have sufficient funding for the Chelsea Square piece, it's just going to come down to a matter of leading to parallel community engagement processes around the design. So what I guess I, we would propose right now would be to kick off Bellingham Square, you know, this spring, and then, you know, come summer, we should assess whether we can spearhead Chelsea Square within FY '22, or if we should leave it to FY '23, just to allow for a robust community process.
In the, in the CIP is the annual park project, and it asks for $350,000, but I didn't see anywhere which park we're talking about, so which one is planned?
I think we've committed to Quigley at the specific request of the council, yes.
He, I got, you know the old saying, the baby that cries gets the milk, okay, so good job.
Well, it is a park that hasn't had a huge investment, so.
Understood, understood. So you are, okay, so I saw that they were doing work on Marlboro Street, and separately there is lead paint, lead pipe replacement program, so the two could go inside and side, correct? When they're talking about redoing the sidewalks in certain areas, are they also looking at concurrently, or is that only done when they're doing water and sewer work in a new neighborhood?
So I, you know, that's, I'll turn this over to Fidel, but I think probably redoing the sidewalks is not one we're going to uncover lead pipes. If we identify one independently, we would probably do it while we're digging the sidewalk, but I don't know that we're going to, it's not going to be a process that's going to easily enable us to identify lead pipes on Marlboro, but.
When we started the lead service process, we actually focused on three streets, Marlboro, Bellingham and Grove, and we went up and down and knocked on all the doors and inspected as much as possible, the basements. So I am very confident that actually the, all of the lead has been replaced in Marlboro, Bellingham and Grove, but the $300,000 that we're doing every year, which is not something that a lot of communities are doing, so I thank you for that, is a proactive program. Basically, if any resident calls in and says, hey, I live on Beacon Street, or on, you know, on Garfield, or wherever it is, we will go out and we will verify that it's lead, and we will replace everything, basically up to the water meter, and ensure that lead is taken out. But on Marlboro Street in particular, all of the lead has been replaced already.
Last question for me is the idea of you saying that there is still money left unspent on some particular projects, but we are doing some cleanup and asking if there has been any projects that are now closed. Have you reviewed any closed projects and any unused money that we may end up seeing come back and use for others? Or we, because it was discovered that a year or two ago, this was something that was, we were unaware of, and now the council has been made aware that there was these little pots of money left from, of projects that had already been completed. So my question is, what's the status of projects that have been completed and some money left over?
So I think about two and a half, three years ago, I provided the council with a list of all the outstanding projects going back to 2011 that had some remaining funds in it, and a lot of those we have sort of cleaned out and redirected to other projects through transfers. We are in the, updating that list was one of our goals coming into FY '21, but we've had so many other issues to deal with that. I don't have an updated sheet, I don't, there's no project out there that has huge amounts of money left in it, but the best thing for me to do is to update that list for you. I can assure you that anything that has money in it, we will try to utilize so that we can finish all of these projects that are on our CIPs. A lot of times, we have, the best use of that money is when one of these projects goes over and we need to find some source of funds, and in the past, that's what I have done, I've come to you saying, we have some money left over, let's close out this account, let's use it to fund some additional work. I, we just did that on one project, not that long ago.
Recently we did, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, but the best thing for me to do is to update that. That is a very tedious process, I will tell you, of trying to reconcile projects, and it just, it's time-consuming, so, but the goal will be to get you an updated list of that.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Lopez?
I know I came late. Can you mention the Garden Cemetery, what's going on with cemetery, and what is the update on that?
Yes, so.
Please?
What I was saying is that right now we are in the second half of Phase Two of that major seven-year reconstruction of the Garden Cemetery. This is continued work on the exterior wall and fence, so that's the work that's ongoing right now. The next phase of the seven-phased plan is work on the crypton mausoleum and some other items, and we, and that's what we have proposed to fund. We're basically going to follow the plan as presented to the council. The plan is a detailed plan, it's on our website. What you missed is me saying that the plan is great and still remains the roadmap for us. What has changed, though, is the pricing. Those prices are now three, four years old, so we have to upgrade the pricing so that the plan's pricing is, makes sense. And Alex, I know we talked about going back to our architect to do that, but maybe you can talk about that process. But we are maintaining the plan, and we're finishing Phase Two this construction season. The funding that's in this CIP is for Phase Three.
Can I just say something? What I noticed is, I've been walking around there, I just want to know, who cleans the cemetery, and also, do you think there's any way we can put cameras there? Because I see they throw furniture from the sidewalk inside, it's just that I saw that. Maybe it has nothing to do with this.
So the cleaning is our responsibility, so we would go in there and clean, that's a deep, you know, that is the city's responsibility. I don't know, I'm not sure of the camera situation, to be honest with you.
Just throwing that out.
Yeah, so we might be able to put cameras on the utility poles by the entrances. I don't know if we could put cameras in the interior of the cemetery because of the historic standards we have to follow, but we can definitely find out for you. As the city manager indicated, we're progressing through Phase Two right now, which is the reconstruction of the Central Ave retaining wall, repointing of Chester Ave's retaining wall, the replacement of all the remaining perimeter fencing, and the restoration of 50 gravestones. So this Phase Three will be the crypts that are on site, 50 additional gravestones, and then the installation of new stone dust pathways, as well as some tree planting. You know, we've more or less updated the pricing that the city manager was referring to for this most recent phase, so the pricing in front of you is relatively accurate, and we're currently updating pricing for the latter phases. But the crypt work is going to be pretty significant, just given the fact we have to bring in an architect, a structural engineer, a historic preservationist, and some other specialty workers, and especially contractor on it. So we should hopefully be wrapping up Phase Two this September, and then we'll be segueing into Phase Three this fall.
Any other questions? Tom, last question, the, given that we had to read this twice, and we have a June 1 deadline, do you plan on presenting the loan order at the, by the next city council meeting?
I, I think I can probably have it done. I'll just, I'll talk to Ned tomorrow, but I'm sorry, I wasn't familiar with the June, is there a June 1 deadline for the vote? Okay, then I guess we'll have to do it. So we'll have to have a loan order for you, to provide you with for the May 3 meeting. We'll do that, I'll work on that this week.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, worst case scenario, we have a special meeting and we'll just do the CIP?
No, I think, I think we can provide you with an order, but I might get it to you on Monday. Do you need it in advance of the, do you need the actual order by Thursday?
If possible.
Okay, all right, let me work on it, I'll work on it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further business, that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everybody.